Thompson.
Here.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Milton.
Pauls.
And Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation by Councilmember Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I just start the meeting with a prayer for peace in the Middle East and to Israel and Hamas and all other groups that are claiming, pointing fingers at each other and who started what, that hopefully reasonable minds can come together and get some sort of peace agreement there, since the one for 2012 is obviously broken down. It's costing a lot of people their lives, so just prayer for thought today.
City Clerk, sir.
Publication in the Daily Record on July 25th, no, sorry, per-council and regular city council meetings, July 29, 2014. Current copy of the openings act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law, may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but not engage in debate or issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Mr. Clerk.
Zoning orders and final rating and planning board attachments, item number five. Orders to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district the property located at 14225 Q Street. A planning board and a planning department recommend approval.
Item five is on the agenda today and it's up for a public hearing. We'll start with proponents. Any proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents here today? Public hearing is closed.
Can we adjourn? Second?
It's removed and seconded. No lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed six to zero. We'll take items six through eight as one case. Six is resolution to implement a platent titled I Street Place located at 11616 I Street is hereby accepted in preparation for final plaid as authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is the platent titled I Street Place is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement providing for waste, shed, management fees, and sewer connections to the Omaha sewer system is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items six through eight are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Rich Green, 11213 Davenport Street, Street 300 here in Omaha. On behalf of the owner, 116I Street LLC, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents to be heard today? Are there any opponents to be heard today? Public hearing is closed. The Vice President of the Council.
Mr. Clerk, second.
Removed and seconded. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six through eight have been adopted six to zero. Preserving City Council Rule 70, agenda items number nine through 11 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 12, native Omaha Club, 3819 North 24th Street, request permission to change the location to 39, 32 North 16th Street. A is communications from planning, B is communications opposing, and C is a request from the applicant to allow withdrawal.
Motion to allow withdrawal, second.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Withdrawn six to zero. Item number 13, Tobacco Hut, number 19, it's 6206 Ames Avenue, package liquor license application, new location. You have communications supporting and you have communications opposing.
Item number 13 is up for public hearing today. Proponents, please.
John Gurnison, 71013 Street, on Oahu, Iowa.
Thank you. Just answer any questions we may have.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents today? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Normally, I would be one of those who believes that you should give everybody a chance, but occasionally I'll waver from that, especially if it's a density issue and if it's an issue of an area that has a lot of history. And my history with this case is 13 years of history, and I've seen a lot happen. And I know just a couple of weeks ago, I voted yes in terms of a restaurant, but that was because I believe that the restaurant posed different problems. But I believe that liquor sales at this location, in light of the fact that there are quite a few other establishments in that area, it's just not what we need. And so occasionally, I'll break my own rule. So I would say that my colleagues probably that maybe this should be denied, but I want to hear what others are going to say. And my vote will be a no, and then I want to hear what the representatives from the other, from the abiding, abutting area would have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Ms. Councilmember Jerem.
I would echo those comments and point out that it's basically a very troubled neighborhood that has a proliferation of outlets on Ames Avenue. And particularly with experience we've seen with other outlets, it's really not helping to contribute to the redevelopment of that area, that there's been, I think, over 25 million, maybe even 30 million of redevelopment just east of there. And it's spurring a more positive redevelopment of the area that I think if we had yet another outlet for off-sale packaged liquor could deter that. So I would agree with what you just said and add that to it. And make a note, though, it's no reflection on Tobacco Hut. They have a location near my house, and it's a store that people believe is, that I hear is well-run, that I've been to myself, and I think you do a good job over on Center Street. And I haven't had any complaints about your store there. It's just that this particular area is pretty sensitive and is on the verge, I think, of doing good things in terms of its rebound. But if you want to say something, I see you chomping at the bit over there.
Yes, I've been, we've been doing this for 23 years, and we take extensive steps to make sure that we don't sell to minors, that we don't sell to intoxicated persons. We even go as far as to have our own in-house stings. We do additional training with our people. We send them to different programs. We give money to the community to make sure that this kind of stuff stops. Since we clean up our areas and our parking lots and things like that, we eliminate, we have a store about a mile away from there, and when we saw that this particular building was open, we thought that we could help redevelop this area as well and hire local people. And we've hired 10 people, all local, from a local area, and it's, we have no reason to make this a, it's called Tobacco Hut, yes, but we are a convenience-style store, a groceries-type store. Our main focus is going to be on the neighborhood store. That's why we put that in there. When we first got into this years and years ago, we did have issues in the Benson area, and we completely cleaned that up, and we made it a nice store. We had issues with being robbed, but it turned into a neighborhood store where everybody was basically watching the store, and if anything were ever to happen, the locals would basically turn the others in, and then it stopped. So we've been...
And I don't think that, from what we're saying, if you heard otherwise, you've misunderstood what we're saying. In fact, the people in my neighborhood don't even call your store Tobacco Hut, they just call it the Hut.
That's why we changed the name. But the reason I'm telling you this stuff is because when we went into this area, we spent upwards of half a million dollars to redevelop this, bring local jobs in, and to help that part of the community. I don't see it as a detriment. I see it as we're also trying to improve based on all the new development that was on 30th, 40th, 50th, and Ames. So that was the main reason that we put this investment in. And we also did it within a mile of our, one of our other locations.
And I don't know how the vote's going to go here today. I just wanted to give you the benefit of hearing what my rationale was for how I'm going to vote today. And it's no reflection on you or your business or your business plan. And as I've said, my own experience in my neighborhood with your stores is that you do run a very good operation. But this is a very sensitive area that is really struggling with a lot of social issues and challenges and crime. And there's so much positive energy and momentum building on Ames just to the east of this location that I'm very hesitant to risk what was happening there. And I know that the developers who are now reaching out to Councilman Gray to have him show them sites that are available for other redevelopment. And whatever happens here today, whether it's a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation, you still go to the State Liquor Control Commission, who will ultimately decide whether you do get a license or not at this location. So I just wanted you to hear my rationale. And I don't know if anyone else has questions for you, but that's all.
Well, one of the things that I heard is that in this area, that there are some concessions that have been made to individual sales of like small items, like individual drinks or individual shooters. And we're actually willing to make those concessions as well. We've been there for three weeks now, and obviously more and more products are coming in. And we've seen the numbers go from the very first day, 45 customers, up to about 260 as of yesterday. And we asked the public's opinion, and obviously, they want the liquor. But most of the people that are asking for it are the people that are going, are coming home from work, and they want that package, that 12-pack, not that individual where they're going to walk down the street and cause problems. And like I said, I would be willing, if we had those style products, to make a concession of not selling individuals. And that's absolutely fine, because, like I said, we want to help with the redevelopment, give the locals in this area the jobs, and try to help redevelop it. That's why we got into it to begin with.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the years, I know that my colleague, Dr. Thompson, and I have heard time and time again, when they come up for applications like this, well, we need it to make our bottom line a lot better. And what I've heard out of this applicant is just the opposite. He knows that there's a renaissance going on and wants to be part of that. And I'm willing to give him that chance. And again, ours is just a recommendation. It's going to be up to the Liquor Commission, hear your name. But I was kind of impressed. I understand the density, and that was kind of where I was leaning towards, but want to be part of the renaissance of what's going on in that particular part of the city, I'd give this individual a chance. So I'm going to support it.
Okay. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. President, we had mentioned earlier today at pre-council that sometimes when these votes come up, and they are close, and there's a council member that's missing, whether or not it's a good thing to offer, you know, whether we lay this over or not. And, you know, I'm ready to vote no today, but at the same time, I want to be fair. Was there any more discussion about that?
Well, I can tell you, when my, I'm not, I can't support it. The neighborhood right now is too sensitive, and again, it has nothing to do, no reflection on you, but the sensitivity of that neighborhood is so great right now that I would feel that I would be doing a disservice to some of my constituents if I did not address the concerns that they have about more alcohol in the area and the proliferation of alcohol establishments along Ames Street.
Have we established whether or not we're going to vote it up or down today, or...
We haven't established a vote yet, but we did, I think you were. Were you not offered the opportunity to wait for our seventh, our seventh council member?
I was offered that, but I really wanted to discuss this with you today, just to let you know. And, you know, just one little comment. I wouldn't put my people in harm's way, because we've had the history of being robbed and all that, at gunpoint, many times over the last 23 years, if I didn't feel that we could make it work. So I am 150% wanting to help redevelop this area, and I do not want to put my people in harm's way. New business, we could have one person working a shift. I have spent the money. I have two people working at all times. I put in extensive security measures. I've got 32 cameras up, and I just really would like to make this happen. And like I said, if there's some concessions that need to happen with this, I'm fine with that.
Can I ask, Mr. Mungard?
Sure, go ahead.
Can I have you sit down while I have the city attorney come up? Tom Mungard, deputy? Or are you chief deputy? Whatever. I don't want to...
Tom Mungard, deputy city attorney.
I just have some procedural questions so that you can hopefully help elucidate what happens from here. Let's just say hypothetically that there's either a majority to recommend approval of the license or to deny approval of the license. What then happens to the applicant? And then what happens if there's a three-to-three tie?
Before you do that, this is also one that's, there's a church too close, so that will have some impact on what I think Tom's answer might be.
Well, let's just start with your recommendation. The only way you can make a recommendation that will have any effect of the commission is by majority vote. So if you can't get a majority either way, no matter how that happens, this will go down to the Liquor Control Commission as no recommendation by the city council. You're taking no position on it. It will then be entirely up to the Liquor Control Commission on whether the license is granted or not. They may or may not hold a hearing on it. They're not obligated to. They're only obligated to hold a hearing if you recommend denial. So they could decide, everything's in order and the license is granted. Either way, even if they have a hearing, we won't participate. I go down and participate only if you recommend denial. So if you can't get a majority vote here today, that's the end of it here. It's up to the state. Regardless of what you do here, there, because there's a church within 150 feet of this location, the commission has to either deny it or have a hearing and notice the church in. They have to give the church an opportunity to have their say. If they do that, then the commission can make its own decision either way. So if you're left without a majority today, that's the end of it for us, and it's up to the state. Subject to, of course, any citizen in the area or any citizen in the city could file, three citizens could file a protest and trigger the required hearings down there, but if that happened, we wouldn't participate.
Thank you.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be honest, what I've heard today does impress me, but also I have to listen to what the president's saying. In his area, this is really a concern. So if I vote today, although I see the potential, I truly do, because it appears you do have your business planned together, I probably have to vote no if I vote today.
Let me, let me say a couple of things before I call on you, Ms. Milton, if you don't mind. Let me say, first of all, that I can't support this, because I know the history of the neighborhood, and I know the sensitivity that exists within that neighborhood currently. I would encourage my council members, though, to vote your conscience. You know, based on the presentation today and based on what you, whatever other side homework you have done, vote your conscience today. But for me personally, I can't support it, only because I know the circumstances surrounding the neighborhood, some of the sensitivity that continues to exist in the neighborhood, and I can't in good conscience go against that. So, Ms. Milton.
I just have, if Mr. Gurnison could come back up? Mr. Gurnison, you stated you'd been open for three weeks now, and you've hired 10 employees?
Yes.
10, or 10 employees from the area?
Yes.
I mean, my problem that I have with some of these liquor decisions is, is there any way for businesses, somebody like Mr. Gurnison, who's going to put a significant amount of money into developing a business in an area where we're encouraging business development, and this may not be the exact business that we want, is there any way for them to get a feel for whether they're going to be approved for a liquor license before spending all of that money and opening their business, and they're just taking a chance? I mean, and my question, I guess, would be, have you, did you contact any of the council members? I know I wasn't contacted ahead of time or before you even decided to build this, to see if this was going to be a problem? Because I really do hate denying business owners who have put a significant amount of money into a business and then costing them their business.
And that's, that's true. And we're not a big, huge corporation that's come in from out of town. You know, we are local people, and it's all about the community and making things better. And I did contact one of the council members a few weeks ago and left a message so that I could discuss it. I never received any calls back, but that's fine, because, you know, people are busy. I understand that.
Well, but that would have been fairly late. I mean, you'd already, you'd already put the money and the investment into your business at that point.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Because I think what we need to let the citizens of Omaha know is that this council isn't going to just rubber stamp liquor licenses. And so if you're going to be opening a business, a restaurant, or something like this, that maybe you need to get in contact with your councilperson well in, well in advance to see what the feel of the council's going to be, especially in an area such as this or next to a church.
Well, a couple of things. Years and years ago, I was at these council meetings for various reasons, and I saw the issues that happened with the, I think it was Cartier.
Well, it was Cartier's, then Keno King.
Yeah.
Now it's Cleopatra's.
Right. So I know with the community on that side, I was here when there was hundreds of people sitting here wanting to not give the license. I was like shocked when the license was approved. And then I don't think it was maybe six months later, it was revoked. So I can totally understand where you guys are coming from, where you've had these issues in the past. But going into that, I've seen these issues over the last, you know, 15, 20 years. And I knew when I was buying the location that there were issues over there. I've seen it, and I wanted to make sure that whatever we did was to improve and help the community. At the end of the day, our name, it says Tobacco Hut, we changed it to, like Mr. Jerem said, the Hut, and we're trying to be a local grocery convenience store for people and have a positive spin and give locals the jobs to where they're dealing with their own people in their own areas. They know each other. And that's what we're trying to do. There are so many things that go into a business. I've opened 15 businesses in the last, you know, 15 years, and it's hard to go over every little thing to make sure that everything's going to be set. We tried to do as many things as possible to see that we were going to be okay with this, and there's always the hurdles that come in the way. And I understand this is a big hurdle, but I didn't think, based on our history with the city and the jobs that we have given people, that it would be an issue with us based on our history, because we have a good history.
Well, and I would agree with that. I've never seen any problems or anything come in front of our, in front of the council and regarding any of the other tobacco huts around the city.
We've made security issues. We've helped the police department out with different crimes based on the security that we have in all the stores. We have cameras pointing in every direction, so if something happens across the street or down the road, we might have that data for them. So, yeah, we're trying to make it a community thing. We're from here. We're not a big, huge corporation, and we're trying, you know, to help the city and the people in it.
Well, and I guess I don't question that you would be a good neighbor. It's coming down to where this has nothing to do with you, Tobacco Hut, or your contributions to the city of Omaha. I think what President Gray is saying is that alcohol sales right here in this area isn't what this area needs as we're trying to redevelop. And I do think, though, that you could be a positive addition. Right now, though, from what I'm hearing from the council members sitting here, is that there, there may not be enough votes. And I'm wondering if you'd like to change your mind at this point? I would be willing to make a motion to lay this over so that Mr. Festerson would be able to have a vote in this matter. If that's something that you would be willing to do, I'd be willing to make that motion to lay it over.
That's fine. And I would also like to say that I reached out to the church that was there. I never got a response back, because we're even willing to donate some monies for programs. You know, we all have people in our lives that have addictions, AA, NA, and all that. And typically, these churches will house those programs, and if we had to give some kind of monthly donation to help with those programs, to help the people in that particular area, we'd be willing to do that as well.
And I guess I, I'm just going to, I would like to do a motion to lay this over so that perhaps you could...
That's fine.
...provide the council with some additional information, and then we could have a full council make a vote on this, because I think this is a very difficult, this is a very difficult decision to make on this issuance, because you are such a good business owner and you do contribute positively to the community. So...
I understand.
If, unless you're objecting, I would like to make a motion to lay this over.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yep. We don't, we don't have council next Tuesday.
That's fine.
Mr. Thompson? Are you continuing the public hearing?
I think we should, so that Mr. Festerson, or Councilman Festerson would have the ability to ask any questions he'd like to ask.
Yeah, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Gurnison, if you want me to reconsider my point of view, which is to vote no, go meet with the church and get the church to come and say that they're willing to be partners with you and they're okay with it.
I will try.
So I'm going to put it back, put the ball back in your court. Now, if the church comes and says, no, we don't need that, Mr. Gray is correct, then I'm going to stay with my original vote.
Sure. I'll do everything I can.
You have two issues here. You have, you need a waiver for that distance thing. And you pick, you're a great business that maybe picked the wrong part of town, or it's not wrong part of town, but wrong stretch of street. Understand? So if maybe you were, you know, five, six, seven, eight blocks different somewhere else, this wouldn't even be an issue.
I understand. The reason why I picked that location, A, it was available, but B, all the new construction and everything from 50th on down.
Yeah. And you've described that very well. You've described what your motives are. So I need to see if the church is in agreement with your vision.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Before I call for the vote, though, again, this has no reflection on you. The sensitivity of that area is what bothers me the most. It's a hurdle that I personally can't get over, but I am, I am, in a way, glad that you, you agreed to the layover so that you have all seven council members here to take the vote, so...
And I would love to know if there's any additional feedback of anything that we can do to make it better.
One would be to contact the Benson Ames Alliance. Benson Neighborhood Alliance.
Okay.
That would be, if you can, if you could, if you can convince them of what your intent is, what your motives are, and the fact that you want to be part of the growth, you may be able to convince them to do that. But at this point in time, that's the neighborhood that I'm most concerned about, and if you can make contact with them as well as the church, I think that would, I think that would go a long way towards the decision this council has to make in two weeks.
And I will do that, but obviously, we have a store in Benson that's been there for 23 years, and I don't know if the Benson Alliance has had any issues with that location or not.
They have not, but I, but I, but this is a different part of town. This is, this is a different part of the community.
Okay.
And even the Benson folks have been highly concerned about liquor establishments around in that area because of the experiences they've had in the past.
And I totally understand that. Like I said, I've been here, I've seen it, and I, you know, it's just that we're different.
Don't convince your partner.
Yeah, and the Benson, and don't forget the Benson Neighborhood Association and the Benson Ames Alliance. They would be, I think, and just if you can contact some of their representatives, they'll get the information out.
Okay.
But if you can make contact with them, I think that would go a long way towards this council, helping this council make the correct decision.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, don't, yeah, don't...
I'm not allowed... I'm not a last-minute guy. I'm not.
It's been a motion to lay over two weeks, and it's been seconded, no more lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks.
Thank you. Please make those contacts for me, if you would.
Item fourteen, Crave, 200 South 31st Avenue, Suite 4103, request permission to appoint Josiah Orsi, Orsini?
Yes.
My name is Joshua Orsini. I live at 19605 Pierce Street.
Let me open the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Item number fourteen is up for a public hearing. Proponents, please.
My name is Joshua Orsini. I'm from 19605 Pierce Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any, any other proponents here today? Any opponents here today? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero, or six to zero. Fifteen, Tailgaters Sports Bar, 2603 South 120th Street, request permission to appoint Mary Marsh, manager.
Public hearing on item fifteen is today. Proponents, please. You can go ahead, proponents.
My name is Mary Claire Marsh. Do you want my, what, what'd you say you wanted?
Name and address.
308 Fon Court, Bellevue, 68005.
And you're here to answer any questions we might have?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Any opponents here today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifteen is approved, six to zero. Item number sixteen.
Thank you.
McFosters Natural Kind Cafe, 302 South 38th Street, request permission to appoint Levon Trayan, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen is today. Proponent, proponents, please.
Kelly Johnson.
Address.
107, I'm the owner, 107 11th Street, Glenwood, Iowa.
I'm Laverne Trayan, 4728 Cass, Omaha.
Thank you. Any other, and you're here to answer any questions we might have, correct? Okay, any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents here today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Fourteen is approved, six to zero, or sixteen.
Sixteen.
Seventeen. Sam and Louis New York Pizzeria, 2418 Cummings Street, request permission to appoint Robert Nun, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventeen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Robert Nun. Address is 1862 North 152nd Plaza, Sam and Louis New York Pizzeria.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. I, I think we'll give them a shot. No. I was going to give you a heart, but I'll let you go. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, six to zero. Item number eighteen, September Fest Salute to Labor, request permission for special disease licenses for Beer Garden at Century Link Center Omaha, Lot D, on August 29th, 30th, 31st, September 1st, with music ending at midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item eighteen is today. I know there's a representative here, but she's having a little difficulty getting around today, so I just wanted to acknowledge that she is here if we have any questions.
I see Linda back there, and this is her, I don't know what, how many years now, thirty-fourth year down here, and even though we, we've approved outdoor music and SDLs in north downtown to one in the morning, they voluntarily do midnight, and they don't want to go any later than midnight, so I'm happy to make the motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of City Council because I had placed on the consent agenda to be removed, items from root consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items number nineteen through twenty-seven were held on July 22nd, 24th. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nineteen through twenty-seven were passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items number twenty-eight through thirty-five are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself and by your name and address and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-eight through thirty-five are adopted, seven to zero, or six to zero. Special use permit, meatpacking and related industries. Item number thirty-six, resolution of special use permit, application to allow meatpacking and related industries in a heavy industrial zone, district located at 2630 N Street, is hereby approved. A, planning board and planning department recommend approval. B, your communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Tom Meyer, 2630 N Street, to answer any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Yes, we have a bunch.
Please come on down. Those who are opponents.
Just get in line.
Just get in line if you want, and, and make sure you state your name and address, for the record, please.
Nick Wagner, 5507 Dodge.
And you're an opponent? Did you have any comments you wanted to make, or?
It's, it's just my opinion that this type of market is kind of a step backwards in terms of food safety and the ethical treatment of animals. Maybe it's, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but it sounds like there's going to be slaughter out in, pretty much out in public. People will pick out the animals that they want, and, and then they kind of do away with them right there. So, I guess I just want to know if that's really what this is, or if I've been misinformed.
Okay, thank you. Next opponent, please.
May I distribute something to you?
To the clerk, please. If you just give it to the...
Hello, my name is Clarinda Karpov. I live at 3030 Cass Street, Apartment Two, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. Tom's Live Market would be a step backward for animal welfare and food safety. This on-the-hoof meat market is not like a family farm. Because the penned animals would be chosen for death by customers and killed and processed while you wait, and because customers can choose to watch the killing, there is an element of theater which can easily be abused by individuals attracted to open violence as entertainment, like snuff films, and animals suffering in death is entertainment, violence is a spectator sport. There are numerous animal welfare concerns. Where would the animals be sourced from, and will they be treated humanely? Customers determine how an animal is killed. They can decide and choose how the animal would be killed. What if they choose an egregiously cruel method? Who is to draw the line, and what is the line between food and cruelty? Will animals even be rendered unconscious prior to slaughter, as is customary? This is a slippery slope. As it is, farmed animals have the fewest welfare protections of any animals. I have grave concerns about this kind of open violence. To be able to look into a trusting animal's innocent eyes and order that creature's death is desensitizing, and it, and, and we're talking about laypeople here, we're not talking about professionals, we're talking about customers. And it shuts down empathy and compassion, and that is disturbing. Social workers know that children especially are traumatized and also endangered by being exposed to animal suffering, because the objectification and abuse of animals causes children to shut down emotionally, which can put kids at risk to do violence themselves or to be more vulnerable to victimization by violence. And we know that violence toward animals and tolerating violence to animals are markers for potentially violent behavior in a child or an adult. This live meat market reminds me of live dog meat markets in Korea, which are illegal but common, where customers choose a live dog to be slaughtered for them. Especially as the animals that Tom's Meyer would show and offer in pens, like a county fair, including goats, sheep, pigs, chickens, rabbits, and small cattle are typical of petting zoos and are often even adopted as family pets. We don't eat dogs in Omaha, but like dogs, pigs, for example, have the intelligence of a four-year-old child. A facility like Tom's Live Market gives a wrong and confusing message to families and children. There are also important health concerns for the consumer. UNL Professor Dennis Burson, who is a meat extension and food safety specialist, when asked about Tom's Live Market, told the Omaha World Herald that he, quote, "would have some concerns about newly processed meats being sent home with customers immediately after being processed without being chilled," as is customary in the United States and much of the world, to, you always chill the meat first. Tom's Live Market would give the processed meat to the customer right away, soon as it's processed, without time for chilling. This is a huge risk, because animals such as all of the animals that will be there are, this is a huge risk, because these types of animals, and housed in this way, frequently carry E. coli and Salmonella bacteria, which can be transmitted to people in the meat and also by the live animal, directly and even indirectly, from the straw or the dust in the air. And an environment like this is ideal for the bacteria to flourish. Breakouts of E. coli and Salmonella have often occurred, according to the Centers for Disease Control, at petting zoos, fairs, and other animal exhibits, with children, the elderly, and those with compromised immune systems being the most vulnerable. Tom Myers has said that he will be showing the animals in pens with straw or woodchips as at county fairs. Furthermore, plants that slaughter animals and process meat for sale require onsite federal inspections. But a so-called custom-exempt facility like Mr. Myers would not require onsite federal inspections of the animals before and after they were killed or of the processed meat. As many among Mr. Myers' target clientele may patronize the market for religious or cultural reasons, there are difficult issues of multiculturalism here. But this must not be allowed to prevent the humane treatment of human beings or animals. Regardless of whether you are a vegan, a vegetarian, or a carnivore, this proposal raises serious concerns. Tom's Live Market is a step backward in our evolving care for animal welfare. It is also a dangerous development for food safety standards. I'd like to take a minute, if I may, to read aloud the handout that I gave you, which very briefly talks about disease outbreaks associated with petting zoos and other such animal exhibits, which would be analogous to the layout of, of Tom's Live Market. This information comes from the Centers for Disease Control and from several of the animal welfare groups. Children who visit petting zoos and other animal exhibits often bring home more than their parents bargained for. Health officials indicate that petting zoos are hotbeds of serious pathogens, including E. coli and Salmonella bacteria. Experts warn that infections can spread through direct or even indirect animal contact. The area surrounding the animal's cage can be teeming with bacteria, and children can even bring it home on their clothing. The very young, the elderly, and others with weakened immune systems are especially at risk. Children who come into contact with E. coli can develop bloody diarrhea, anemia, chronic kidney failure, or neurological impairments such as seizures or strokes. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, kidney failure can occur, and dialysis and transfusions are sometimes necessary. Some who are sickened by E. coli bacteria must undergo surgery to have part of the bowel removed. E. coli can cause diarrhea, urinary tract infections, respiratory illness and pneumonia, and other illnesses such as hemolytic uremic syndrome, which can be fatal. Salmonella can cause food poisoning, typhoid fever, acute arthritis, even death, and just a few of the illnesses that have resulted at petting zoos, for example, since 2002. The Children's Petting Zoo at the Toledo Zoo was closed indefinitely after three animals tested positive for Campylobacter, an infectious bacterium that causes gastrointestinal illness. An outbreak of E. coli bacteria in Florida was definitively linked to animals from petting zoos at three fairs. Twenty-six people were confirmed stricken with E. coli infection, including 23 children. State health investigators reported 108 likely E. coli cases in people who had visited a petting zoo at the North Carolina State Fair. Forty-three of those cases were confirmed by lab tests. Canadian health officials issued a warning after six children became ill with suspected E. coli infections after visiting petting zoos in British Columbia. Twenty-two people, including 12 children, who developed kidney failure, were hospitalized after being infected with E. coli at the Lane County Fair in Eugene, Oregon. It was thought that the bacteria made contact with visitors' hands by way of the dust in the sheep barn. Eighty-two people were sickened. The Philadelphia Zoo closed two petting areas after two children, ages three and five, who visited the zoo came down with E. coli infections and had to be hospitalized. Now, this live meat market obviously is not a petting zoo, but all of the animals that are proposed to be there can carry E. coli and Salmonella in their gut, and, and, and it can be transmitted to human beings who are in their presence. They don't even have to touch them, and so that's, that's a very important health concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
My name's Kenneth Schroeder. I live at 5919 North 42nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and the zip code is 68111. Now, the only thing I have to say that Clarinda hadn't covered is that this looks a lot like entertainment to me. It's pretty close to entertainment. I've, I also know that satanic organizations, occult organizations bring small children in, and they train them and mentally condition them to brutality by, brutality by having them kill small animals, like rabbits, whatever. And this looks a lot like that to me. And also, there's no regulation to this. There's no, I mean, I like to find, I like to have some more information on what's going to be happening here. I like to, I think it really should be, at least be table until Mr. Myers can bring some more information as, as to what he's going to do here, and I think there ought to be some regulation to this. That's all I have to say. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to be heard today? If not, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Meyer, would you waste any rebuttal time, please? And I'm sure there are questions.
First of all, this facility, the lady was correct, is considered a USDA custom-exempt facility. And what that contains is that it's like if you take, if you buy a beef from a locker, from a farmer and take it to a locker plant, there's no inspector watching that beef get inspected either, because it's for your own personal use. Now, on Monday and Tuesday, we could have it where we could do USDA slaughter. The USDA guys, I've talked to them, they said they would send inspectors in if we wanted to sell meat for resale. And that would be if restaurants or the little stores in South Omaha or wherever would want to buy animals and then break it down, we could do that. There's two different parts of the business, and you can never mix either one. They can't be done on the same day. The, the plant will, everything in the plant will be up to USDA snuff, just like any other plant in town. Our, our building will have a, its own number. When, they will inspect us probably, they said, every three days to a week to start with, to make sure everything's good. And if there's any issues, then, uh, then we'll fix them. Um, they brought up a lot of stuff, so I'll try to answer. The, a couple of things were that we can just slaughter the animals any way you can. No, you have to slaughter them under USDA rules. You have to stun the animals. There's different ways to do it. Um, we, we won't get into the details right now, but every, you, you just can't go in and have some customer say, "I want you to drop it 20 feet off the roof to slaughter." You know, that, that doesn't happen. Everything has got to be done in a humane way. And I'm kind of surprised at their questions because this place will be open to the public. You know, you can't go to another slaughterhouse and see what goes on. I mean, here, we invite people to come in. Bring your cameras, see what happens there, come and visit it. And if you don't want to watch your animal be slaughtered, you can call ahead. We can get it ready for you. You can come pick it up. There's waiting areas in there if you don't want to watch your animal get slaughtered. Um, you know, there's, it, it, it's not, it's not some gruesome, it, it's a different source for people to get their protein needs. And, you know, if you watch TV at all, it seems like everything now is a cooking show or a, a meat show, and it, it just is a different way for people with different needs to find their protein. You know, I've always wanted to, I always li, I've always been a farmer or ag guy, and I always wanted to see what I was eating. And to a lot of people, it's important to see what they're going to eat. And then they want to make sure that the process, that the one that they picked is the one that they're going to feed their family. You know, it doesn't go behind a closed curtain. Yes, you can watch the whole process if you want to, but, uh, all the employees are trained. I mean, we're all, we have a HACCP plan at the, at the building, at our own HACCP plan. And, uh, and, and the rules are very stringent. I mean, it's, it's unbelievably stringent to get these built and, and all the codes that you have to go through to, 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 to do it. The outside pens back there, um, you know, we, we will clean them probably every day. The chickens will be in cages, cleaned daily. Uh, it'll, it'll be a very, very clean facility, very, very clean.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Grenat. Public, um, public hearing is closed, by the way. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for my colleagues', edification, I'm sure that you have probably received as many communications in opposition as I have. My last count at 1:30 this afternoon was 31 communications in, in opposition to this. But I would like to note that most of them were from out-of-state individuals, uh, in, in opposition. For the benefit of those that are probably watching, maybe from out-of-state or have some sort of communication locally or in the region, and I want to make sure that they fully understand this particular application and this request. So, Planning Department, Dave, you've been assigned to speak on this, I'm told.
Dave Fansall, City Planning.
Um, the process that's gone through for this applicant is what we refer to as a land use review. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, sure. It's a special use permit, and obviously the land use review is part of that process.
Part of that process.
Correct.
All right. And that's not something that the Planning Department takes lightly, and it has a lot of moving parts that need to be answered to the Planning's Department's satisfaction and by law.
Yeah, there's, there's quite an extensive checklist that we go through when we do, when we review special use permit applications, yes.
Okay. And then when that process is over, uh, and that typically could run anywhere from, what, 30 to 60 to 90 days, depending upon time of the year that you get it and what's happening and all of that?
Uh, well, when we receive an application, we usually have about three and a half weeks to turn it around for a planning board agenda.
Okay. All right. And then after that, it goes to the Planning Board with a recommendation, uh, either yea or nay from the Planning Department?
Correct, yeah. Staff, staff takes, you know, those three, four weeks to review the application, and we write a recommendation report, the director's recommendation report to Planning Board. It's a public hearing and, uh, as part of the Planning Board process, and then on special use permits, those get forward to the City Council.
And in this particular case, there was a Planning Board recommendation to approve, is that right?
Correct.
And the Board, I believe, approved it unanimously?
I believe so.
I, okay. I could look that up, but it did pass.
Correct.
And then hence it comes to us.
Yes.
Okay. So, in, it's sort of a thumbnail sketch of how it got here. It just didn't pop up on a radar screen, and you guys said, "Yeah, there's a process." I want everybody to understand there's a process that goes through.
Yes.
All right. Um, does the, that your process, um, doesn't include like the number of employees or the operational status or the source of animals or how they're housed? Is that correct? That's not part of this review? Is that correct?
Well, it's part of the operating statement, which we looked at. And each, each use is different. Some operating statements are much more detailed than others need to be. But, I mean, we look at the number of trips per day. We look at the number of employees. We did ask for a better defined operating statement in this case before it came to the council, just so we knew as much as we could about the operation of it.
Okay. And that, uh, there was a revised site plan and a revised operating plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
That was requested?
Correct, yes. And we received both of those, and we reviewed both of those before we even forwarded this case on the council, before we even put it on agenda. We received that information. Staff looked at it. Again, we looked at the revised operating statement. The site plan that came in with the application was non-code compliant. Would have been a number of waivers that were needed by the applicant, and we felt that since the site's going to be cleared and basically starting from scratch, there was no reason to not, you know, it, it should comply with the zoning code, so when that, uh, revised site plan does that.
All right. Stay close.
I will.
All right, thank you. For the benefit of my colleagues, uh, in some of the opposition, I think all of the opposition, there was noted about, uh, health concerns and, uh, non-compliance and safety issues, things like that. I did take the time to touch base with, uh, the Doug's County Health Department and the Nebraska Humane Society. They will investigate if complaints are received, so they're not completely out of the picture. So, ju, just for your, for your edification. Mr. Myers? If you can come back up, please. Just restate your name for the record. That's all we'll need.
Tom Meyer.
Your revised operating statement answered the questions about the debris or waste, how that's going to be handled, the odor, and what type of volume that you're going to be expected. Your revised operating statement answered those questions sufficiently. That was ultimately approved and passed on to us, so I'm, I'm going to jump over those questions that I have. And you've also stated the, the type of harvesting system that you have in place and concerns, as you heard them, that, uh, from, you know, it's distasteful to cult-like. Care to respond to that maybe a, a little bit more?
Okay, the poultry, and I don't know how much detail to go into here, but like, like a poultry, when, when we slaughter our poultry, ducks, turkeys, you put them in a killing cone. And a killing cone is a cone that's stainless steel. They can't flap, they can't move once they're in the cone. Their head comes out the bottom of it, and you knew, you use a knife that has electricity in it. You put that to the animal, you touch them, right there, they're done. That, that, that's your stunning process, and then, then you bleed them. When you do your hogs, it'll be the same way with electricity. You use a thing, all the big slaughter plants do it, little, the little ones that slaughter two a week. There's two ways a lot of them, like your local locker plant will do it. It's called a stun gun, where you, it's a bolt, stun bolt, where you put a blank cartridge in this thing, you put it towards their head, it hits their brain, the brain function's done, they're dead, then you, you, you bleed them that way. So, there's basically two ways, the stunning with a stun gun or electricity to, to stop it. And, and when you use the electricity, they bleed out better and faster because the electricity kills everything, so.
And the two that you just described have the, um, those are part of the controls that the government said that you need to have in place. Is that correct?
The government, that you don't have to stun animals that way. There are other, there are other ways, but that's the way you want to do it for your employees. You don't want an employee fighting, fighting an animal. I mean, it just don't make sense. I mean, it's just, those are the most humane ways for the, for the animal and the employees working there.
Okay. All right. Um, the, depends, um, oh, by the way, the current, the building that you're looking at now is in dilapidated condition. Your plan is to tear that building down?
Completely.
Clear the site?
Yep.
And put up a brand-new facility?
Yep, yep.
Okay. And will the animals be housed in enclosed part of this facility? In other words, I would not, I could not drive by and look in an open portion?
No.
And see Bessie the pig?
Nope.
Roaming around?
Nope. You can't see, can't see Bessie the pig when you drive by. It's an enclosed, it'll be, it's going to be an all-steel building with ventilation in it. There might be some windows up high on the top of the walls, but, you know, it'll be so high, way, way above where the animals are to let light in, but no, you cannot see any animals. And they're always enclosed in the, in the, in the building, in their pens. And there's even stocking, stocking things to, you, you can't just pack 30 animals in a little pen. You know, the, you know, the USDA doesn't allow that either. You got to furnish water, you got to furnish feed, you've got to, I mean, there's, there's so many rules and regs that the average person doesn't understand what, what all goes to it.
And that, all of those will be in place based upon your operating statement?
Absolutely.
And, and open for inspection?
Though, yeah, you can, any, anybody can walk in at any time.
Okay. Speaking of the walking in, uh, if customer A walks in with his five-year-old son or grandson, um, would, or would your employees encourage them to go to the quiet room? Or you give them a choice of, of watching the harvesting or not?
I will leave that up to the parents or the grandparents who bring it. That's, that, I'm a farm guy. I grew up milking cows, had a feedlot. I know what it's all about. I sometimes think that it's hid too much where your meat comes from, but that's the choice of the parents. That's not my choice. I can't, if someone brings their kids in there, I can't tell them, "Hey, keep your kids over here." That, that's not my choice. That's, they know what this place is when they come. Will have, when they come in, there's going to be signs up on the wall. You know, if you don't want to see this, when you come in, there's also a retail part of it, too, where you don't have to see the animals, you don't have to see, see any of the slaughter if you want to, that you can just go to the retail area and also, you know, sit and wait, too. Or you can call us or, you know, get it ready. You, you don't have to see this if you don't want to. And there'll be signs posted, you know. Now you're getting where the livestock is, and this is the harvest area. But you don't have to see that. They, we're, we're not...
Not forcing anybody?
No, nobody's forced, no. I mean...
Observe that.
Yep.
Okay. So, they, they have a choice.
But you could still, they have a choice. You could still get that animal if, but if you don't, there's going to be a lot of people that don't want to watch it. That, that's just the way it is. Some people do, some people don't. You know, I mean, I can't decide what people want to see and don't want to see.
And is the customer allowed to, if they're looking for a, a rabbit, can they go to, look at the rabbit pen and pick out a specific one for harvesting?
Yep.
They can do that?
Yep. If there's a pen of 10 rabbits in that cage, they can go and pick which one they want. Yep.
And then they have the option of watching it or not watching it?
Yep, yep.
May I ask the, uh, your source of your, of your animals? I, I don't recall that in, in your opening statement. If I missed it, I'm sorry.
Yep. What we hope to do is develop contracts with local farmers and people to raise a lot of our poultry, a lot of our pigs. We don't want the conventional Tyson chicken, you know, the, where there's big boy, we want to have farm-raised chickens raised, where they're running around outside. We'll approach the Amish in southern Nebraska down there. They like raising poultry and livestock for these type of operations. But it, but it doesn't matter who. I mean, if I can't find it local, I might have to go to Iowa, or I might have to go to some other state to get it if there's a demand for it. And, and it'll, I don't even know what the demand will be here for sure until you open them up, you know? Is it going to be all Hispanics coming or who's, you know? Everybody's a little bit different. But, I mean, we'd like to have people grow it as much as possible locally and then set it up and say, "Okay, your 200 chickens are coming in this week." And then we'll also, I've been approached by farmers' markets groups to process chickens for them. It's hard for some of these groups, they say, to find close and local places to process their chickens to sell at the farmers' markets. So, we could do that on Monday and Tuesday, too, so. And I've been approached by people with deer hunting. They want, you know, a place to process deers and stuff like that, and, uh, we'll just have to see how it goes, you know?
So, you, you mentioned that if, if it doesn't work, what will happen to your facility if it's not profitable and you have to decide? What will happen to your facility and what will happen to the animals?
The building is being designed, it's all going to have 14-foot ceilings in it, and that's the standard height if someone wanted to open a conventional locker plant. You know, say where farmers brought in their beef and they wanted their beef or hogged butchered. The holding pens back there will probably have a little more holding pen than they would need, but the building is designed, in case it doesn't work, that we could sell it just as a regular locker plant or a niche, or a niche packing, small packing plant for someone that just does niche, you know, small numbers of whatever it would be, you know, grass-fed, organics, stuff like that.
And your, your delivery processes, as you just mentioned a moment ago, you'll be accepting those deliveries dur, during normal work hours? Is that how that's going to operate?
What, what deliveries now are you talking about?
Those, bring in your, the one, the animals that you're bringing in?
Will, yeah, we will, but nobody can bring their own animal in to get slaughtered. We want to know where they come from.
That was my next question.
We want to know, we, yeah, okay. We want to know the health of the animals. We won't have it where somebody can stop in and say, "Process this animal." I, I won't do that.
So, you would have, uh, your contract deliveries coming in during normal business hours?
Yep. And, and we, we would deliver in the back, we're not delivering with semis. Everything comes in in pickups and double-deck trailers. This isn't a, a huge operation. Everything will come that way. And we'll deliver the stuff in ourself, too. I mean, my employees will be delivering it in. You know, we're not going to be open that anybody can bring in goats or sheep because then that's not safe in the back where you're bringing the animals and you've got customers, you know, looking. We'll, we'll have the animals in the pens before we open for business hours, is what I'm saying. Because you can't be putting animals in pens and have customers looking at animals at the same time. That don't work.
Um...
So, if we open up at eight, we'll probably fill them up at six or seven in the morning.
One question that I did receive right at the last moment, exotic animals, um, alligators?
No.
Nothing along those lines. Basically, you're going to stick to what you listed in your operating statement?
Yep, yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Just want to clear...
Now, I was approached by somebody already if we would process ostriches. You know, I never did it, but ostriches is, is under USDA code. I mean, you could do it.
You, of course, you would not step outside those rules and regulations?
Yep, no, no.
All right. And you did talk about your experience over the, the last three years being a farmer and, uh, I was just curious, in your statement, you were, you were, you were very open in regard, you moved to New Jersey for a while and, and doing delivery of these live market?
When I had the feedlot in South Dakota, uh, my partner was in Texas. And what we did is we leased a farm in New Jersey, and it, it was an old pharmaceutical farm. It had all kinds of pens on it. And what we did is we delivered sheep, goats, and cattle into New York City, into Connecticut, into all over Jersey, to these live markets, like, like I'm going to build. We didn't handle any poultry. Our thing was the sheep, goats, and cattle. So, we delivered, you know, every day to all kinds, you know, all kinds of these operations right in New York... right in New York City.
All right, thank you for, right now. I yield the floor for my colleagues. I, I may have a couple of other questions if, if spawned here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gannett. Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're the same person that just got finished talking, so you don't have to repeat your address. Just so that I understand, I can't take my own pet pig and bring him and then have him slaughtered, correct?
Not during business hours when we're open to the public. Now, on Monday and Tuesday, like I said, the farmers' markets people that wanted us to cut, custom process poultry for them, we might be able to do custom processing then. But I'm not going to, during business hours, you can't do it when we're open to the public.
Okay. How does that relate to your comment not too long ago that we won't process their own animals?
Okay, well, what I, what I, what I was saying was, you can't have it where, when you're open to the public and then people start bringing in pickup loads of chickens or goats or whatever it is and start processing an animal that you don't know, is it healthy? Where did it come from? In front of all these people when, I mean, I want to be in control. I want to know where the animals come from. I want to know what we're selling people. You can't be mixing both at the same time.
So on Tues, Monday and Tuesday is?
There's a possibility that that could happen.
After hours?
That I could, that I could do custom processing, yep.
Okay.
Just like a locker plant.
Or someone were on a deer hunt and they brought their deer in. It's already dead, but they just want it processed.
Right now, I'm not planning on doing deer.
You're not, you're not doing?
Because that's a whole different, that's a whole different, because once you get the deers coming, they really come, and then, then you've got to have a place to store them and keep them cool and, and, not at this time, I'm not going to be a deer processor.
Okay. Um, this is a fascinating topic for me because I remember when I was younger and, in Sunday school, I always wondered, you know, the Old Testament stories about taking a lamb and, you know, sacrificing it right there at the altar. And I thought, hmm, that's kind of, that's kind of harsh. But yet, it seemed to be sanctioned by some deity. And at the same time, I noticed that there was a little hypocrisy in that if somebody else does the meat and I can go eat it, then it's okay, but if I'm there watching it get killed, then it's, it's wrong. So I, I try hard in my life to be consistent.
Yep.
Um, sometimes I reach that goal. And so for me, unless I'm a vegan or vegetarian, I would be a hypocrite to vote no on this. At least, I'm only speaking for myself. So I think the, the cameras and some of that is a little odd. And I think a four-year-old seeing something die is a little odd, but I would think somebody in the seventh or eighth grade would have enough maturity to handle that. I wish there were an age limit, but I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I go back and forth on this one, but for the sake of that I eat meat and that I don't, I don't want to pretend as if somehow I'm sanctified and then the person who's, who actually sees it is evil, that doesn't make sense to me. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and support you, but I'd like to go on record by saying that the cameras, it's, it's a little weird to me and, and the very small children, it's a little weird.
I didn't, I didn't mean they could, people just will bring their cameras in on their phones and take pictures. That, I, I don't, you know, am I going to promote it? No.
Okay.
But when I say cameras, everybody on their phone now takes a picture of everything and it's on YouTube and, or Facebook to whoever it's going to go to. Don't, believe me, I'm not a promoter of bringing your cameras. I said, I stated that wrong. But I just know what's going to happen when people, you know, people on their phones are just, they're in love with them.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'll, I'll support it even though, um, everything doesn't seem to be lining up in my head, but I, right now, I have to be consistent. And, um, that consistency is, at least the way that I've lived my life so far, causes me to say that as long as you have the, the things under control with regards to bacteria, disease, and those kinds of things.
Yep.
That it's hard for me to stop you from being a businessman, especially when I've been eating meat for years. So that's how I look at it.
The, the children issue, it all comes to the parents. I mean, you, you don't have to bring your kids in here. This isn't a place where you're going to send them to school. It's a choice.
That's true. That is true. There are parents that are clueless.
Yep.
And, um, there, it would seem to me, if I were in your position, I would put twelve as a, as an age limit, but, but then again, that's just me. But I don't know, maybe it's something you can think about.
Yep. And there, and there's choices here. I mean, they, they can call ahead, there's three choices. You can go pick your animal and watch it if you want to. You can not go, not pick an animal and just say, Tom, I want three chickens. Go get us chickens. You never have to see any of it. You can go white, right to the waiting area and have a coffee and watch TV. Or you can call ahead and say, and go right to the cash register, and we'll bring it right to the cash register, and here's your three chickens and, you know, we're not forcing, we're not forcing, forcing anybody, you know? And I respect these people that, that came up and spoke. I mean, they, they have their rights. There's a lot of things I don't like in the world either, you know? But are they all wrong? No, they're not all wrong. But you know, there's, I just, some things I don't like, but that's the way it is.
According, according to the one theory, men are supposed to have dominion over the earth and all of the creatures in it. And so I'm still chewing that one over, and until I figure that one out, I'll have to go with you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Gannett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, the, uh, security features, um, I don't want you to elaborate on that, but you're, you're going to have, you know, minimum security features, if I could phrase it.
The whole, the whole facility will be gated or with a fence around it? There'll be a full-time night security person there, and we'll have cameras.
Okay. Well, thank you for, for sharing that. Dave, did you come back up?
Dave Anzal, City Planning.
First time for this type of application for you?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The specific, yeah, this detailed, we've done, obviously, special use permits for meatpacking related industries, but yeah, this is a specialty one.
Okay. Um, during the process, is there anything, um, out of the ordinary that you thought needed to be addressed either with the system or the applicant that we may not have here in black and white in front of us? I want to be able to, you know, assure everybody. I don't know how the vote's going to go.
Are, are you asking me if we, if any red flags came up through the process and we questioned the application of the?
Your phrase, not mine.
Uh, no, no, it was, we, we looked at it for what it was. We required the information. We looked at it with professional, open minds and, 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 like I said in our pre-council meeting, Mr. Meyer's probably been in contact, us, contact with us over the last eighteen months to two years looking for a site. So it wasn't new to us when the application came in this time around.
Okay.
Yet, yet different than other applications.
For specialty use?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
To my colleagues, um, and you're all familiar with Sodom La, has been a meatpacking industry for eons. And we, that industry in my district slaughters probably four to six thousand head of cattle a day. And anywhere from two thousand to three thousand head of hogs a day. Large payroll all the way around in that particular industry. I think Mr. Meyer has a, a niche in that particular industry that he saw not being filled and having the experience. What, what, I got to be honest, that it was, I was leaning towards a no because I didn't have a chance. I knew today would be the opportune time to where I could get questions answered so those out in TV land could, could hear what was going on, those that are in attendance today. And then, of course, there'll also be a, a public record of this that people can refer back to. Um, I, I'm going to probably be second up here to, in the order of voting, but this has been a difficult one to, because of the opponents coming from a wide variety. And I think it was displayed today based upon, from one end of the spectrum to the other. One of the things that I was looking for was the applicant's response to cover both the low side and the high side of that. And if I saw anything of any fluctuation, just bouncing off the walls like a BB in a boxcar, probably would not be the type, or be the one that would support this. So this, this one's going to be a difficult one to do. So I will end with that and if there's anybody else. Thank you for your indulgence.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Gannett. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm sitting up here and I'm listening for, I would invite a number of people to go out to a farm. The discussion we're having up around here, this, this table, if you go further west, they would be smiling at us. Because what the farmers do is what we're talking about. They do it all the time. Tom, would you just come, I'm just have a question. Now, you've been a farmer?
Yep.
Most of your life?
Yep.
Now, what you're promoting right now, you said you went back to New Jersey. So what you're, the, the idea that you want to evolve here in Omaha, this is not a new idea, is it?
This is old as forever.
It's old as forever, and it's all over the, the country.
Yep.
So you're not coming in here saying, hey, I'm going to invent something new?
No.
So, okay. And some of the things that we have concerns about happen on a regular basis in the farm, does it not?
Every day.
Every day. I had the privilege of growing up many years on a farm and, not, not on a farm, but in a small town, and all my, all my rich relatives are farmers. Just to let you know. And I visited this last weekend, so I smiled at our life. But this to them, yeah, what happened to me is true. I, I went to college, I got it. But the thing about it, this is just normal life. Going out and, you know, because I can remember, now, just a little storytelling, I can remember as a small kid, a lot of the neighbors would get together and they would clean their, their hogs. They'd have a long, these big unbelievable-sized barns, there'd be families cleaning their hogs, and it was a joy.
This was, this was a huge family get-together in our farms.
Right.
I mean, this was, yeah, I mean, this was.
So, so I don't see you as doing anything. Now, if you're following the rules and, and doing what the, quote, the governor says, you need to do this, this, and this. If you don't, somebody probably going to close you down.
Oh, instantly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this idea of people going in there and say, oh gee, I'm going to take a look, personally, I wouldn't do that. But I'm telling you, you, if you're out in the country, you see life and death all the time. And people seem to approach it differently. And I just think those of us, including myself now who've become cityfied, I didn't say sissy-fied. I say cityfied. I, I just think that we, we need to get this changed. This is nothing new, happens all the time, and this is new to Omaha, this section. So I'm ready to vote.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Pauls. Mr. Jarrett.
I was thinking over cityfied. It's the cause of the delay. I guess I have a quarrel with, with one thing that you said, Mr. Meyer, and that is that, paraphrasing, if I heard you correctly, you said you can't choose or if, if a parent wants to bring their child in to observe the kill floor, the harvest floor, whatever you're going to call it.
Yep.
You can't control whether there's photography. You can't regulate the age of your customer who's going to come in and do the transaction. I would respectfully disagree. I, I think that as the proprietor, you could set the parameters of your business operation to conform with the standards that you personally seek to uphold, that are above and beyond the USDA regulations, the statement of the plan that you submitted to the city. Um, you know, those are minimum standards for how you're, to conduct your business. And, and if you wanted to ban children's exposure to, to this, whether it's cityfied or whatever you may call it, I think you could. That, that part of the operation strikes me as, as perplexing on, on why you wouldn't address that. But.
Can I answer how we were going to, we were, I want to see what our customer base says. We were going to have comment cards. And that's, because there's going to be things that I won't probably do right or they won't like and I'll want it fixed. That was one of the things I was going to put on the comment card, was please check yes or no, simple yes or no. Does it offend that kids can go see this?
Listen, I, I grew up on both sides of New York City. I spent the first twelve years in urban New Jersey, a half an hour from the George Washington Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
The, the next several years before coming to Creighton for law school, I spent in two hours north of New York City and northwestern Connecticut. My dad got a ten-and-a-half, twelve-acre place, and I had brothers that were into various sorts of animals. And so I'm, I'm familiar with, with the sights and sounds of what can happen on a farm.
Yep.
And I, and I hunt, and I've been out in the field for waterfowl and upland game.
Yep.
And so I know what happens.
Yep.
Um, you know, and as an adult, but certainly that's.
Yep.
My prerogative and my right to do.
I respect your.
But when you have, when you have an operation with, in two thousand and fourteen, and, and the concerns of, you know, children and cameras and glorifying things, and that does raise some concerns with me. I think, I think you could have a successful business niche, and I just see that the one part of your operation, I don't know why I feel this way, it just kind of triggers the undeveloped world, the third-world approach to things.
Yep.
Rather than a more sophisticated, um, approach to it. So I'm wrestling with that. And one of the things that wasn't referenced is, you know, how many employees will you have?
We'll probably start with five to ten. You know, you just don't know how busy you're going to be, you know? I mean, I can't tell you exactly, you know? Hope we're busy. Better be busy.
You know, and I understand the demand. I mean, just this summer, I talked to a farmer in Holt County about possibly doing organic beef, and he said that it would be handled in a locker.
Yep.
In, um, the O'Neill area.
Yep.
But I just, I just, I think you could get me over the hump if you, if you had a, got through this glitch.
Yep.
Of, of how you're going to go about operating the, the business in terms of the cameras and, and the kids.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I respect your decision, but I guess I would just have to let the customer base, I mean, it won't take long, you know? The customers all say we, we don't want, we, we ban the kids, don't let kids back this far. You know, they can stay here and watch TV or whatever.
Right. I mean, but here, here's my point. I mean, Greater Omaha, Omaha Packing, the other Packers, they don't have like kill floor cam on the internet.
Yep.
And I can just see first yahoo, you don't know who's a yahoo, comes into your operation and is, is filming this, and it's on YouTube. You know, and what does that say?
But, but you can go on YouTube now and see, most of the packing plants are, are now showing the harvest part of it. I mean, they want it out there. Now they're building farms where they show the birth to the harvest of hogs. There's, there's big farms that are opening up now where you can watch everything from the pig being. opening up now where you can watch everything, from the pig being bred to the, being born to being harvested. You know, they're opening this up a lot more now than what, than what people, you just go to YouTube some, you know, sometime and look at Harvest Animals and, and it'll be, you could watch it for days.
No, thank you.
But it's there already.
It's nice to know that I wanted to, that it was out there. Well, I, I'm just, that one part of my reaction to, to your operation is, is difficult to, to overcome. I mean, there's other stuff in terms of the South Omaha Environmental Task Force and the waste and, and the trash and, and the odors and managing that whole thing that I can just hear months from now when this, if this gets open, the flood of calls and concerns and whether, how he'll respond to that. But I guess if, if you were willing to address those things that I said on the front end, rather than wait for the customer feedback, then, I mean, because after then, you know, you've opened the door, you've gone down that road.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. That's my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem. Mr. Garnett again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, would you be willing if there was a motion made with a condition in regards to addressing Mr. Jerem's concerns on the front end as opposed to waiting for 350 customer cards to come in? You know, but we have some assurance that there'll be every effort made to limit the viewing of the harvesting process. Would that be?
By children.
By?
By children.
What age?
14.
What, 14 and under?
What do you consider the harvest process? Tell me what the harvest process is to you. What part of that is it?
Well, I, I would, I would say the choice, if they pick up Pinky the Pig and that's the one that they want, okay, that's when it ends. If he or she's 10 years old. And they go into the waiting area, and from then on, as you stated, then that's when the harvesting process begins. Goes in. And as, as you described, one of those methods is used, one of those two methods is used.
What if, what if I had it where they couldn't watch the actual stunning process of the two methods I told you? And after it was blood, but it was on the rail? What, what do you say then? Is that still harvest or is that just meat then?
Is, is that rail process exposed already within your system? Or does that still in behind enclosed area?
You, you could enclose the area where you, when I, when I say harvest the animal, that's when you're slaughtering it, when you, when you use the stunning methods, I told you. When it, you put it there and then you put it on the rail to eviscerate and cut it up the way they skin it or cut up or whatever they want done with it. There's two, you know, to me, it's, it's meat after it's harvested. I mean, you know, you got to kind of define, I mean, I can close off one area or have that closed if they can't see their pig get stunned. But then when it goes on the rail, I mean, we were going to have windows along the whole thing where you could watch, watch it till it got to the saw. Because see what a lot of your customers are going to do. When it gets to the band saw, there's an area where they can stand and tell us how they want it cut up. The, a lot of the people aren't going to want it cut up like you get in the grocery store. You know? They're going to want it cut up in different ways. I'll tell you right now, every, the Hispanics, the Sudanese, the, any group is going to want their animal cut up different from the next. You know? So they're, they're going to be there telling us, you know, hey, I want the whole leg, I'm going to smoke the leg at home. I want it cut up in little chunks. You know? I mean, there's a whole different way of, everybody's going to want it different.
I would just, I would just.
I just got, I got two quick things.
Okay.
Yes. One is, just a reminder for those of us here and, and watching us, this is in a, a high industrial area. There's railroad tracks to the west. There's an interstate to the east. There's a vehicle repair shop and warehousing to the south. So it, it's not that this is being built in the center of a commercial district like South 24 Street or in a residential zone. Okay? Just so we're clear of that. And I'll also ask you, would you feel more comfortable having a full council vote on this? I'd be happy to offer a layover for two weeks.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I, I, that, that doesn't bother me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Dr. Thompson?
Yes. Of course, I went on record with the age thing. And it seems to me that you could be teetering on a split vote here. And the age of 12 was thrown out and then the age of 14 was thrown out. I don't think it's that big of a deal to just say, if you, if, if you think it's natural and normal for people to see the harvesting, that's okay. I can grow to that. It's hard for me to, to envision five-year-olds witnessing it when, even if the parent says it's okay. And I don't even like the video games where you go up and you behead somebody in the video game. I don't, I don't even like that.
Yep.
So it just seems to me that you could have much more success and don't gamble by just giving us an age limit. Those, the kids under a certain limit stay in the viewing room. Those kids that are above a certain, can, can come with their parents. I don't think that's too hard of a, of a request, or too unreasonable of a request.
What, what age limit are you talking though? I mean, what's the 10?
I thought 12. Mr. Jerem and Councilman Jerem said 14. But I, I'd like something and that would make me feel a little bit better. What do you think? What do you think it should be?
I think that's fair. I just don't want to have to card every kid that comes in though when we're busy and see how old they are.
No.
I mean, I'll have, I'll have signs up. I don't, I'm going to have signs up anyway.
What I'm speaking of is let the parents be responsible for obeying the law. And what you'll say is around here, the law is age 12 or whatever. And it's not your, your job to go and card them.
Oh, okay. I, I can live with that totally. I was going to have signs up like I told you anyway, you know, this is where this happens. But yeah, I can have signs up that say, you know, no one under 12 allowed or whatever.
Allowed in this area. They have to stay back in that area. I would feel so much better with it.
Oh, I can do that. I don't have any issues with that. But I can't, if someone brings their kid back there, I can't, you know? I don't want to say, are you 12? Are you 10? Are you eight? You know?
But likewise, if you, if you see a five-year-old, you can walk up to.
Oh, absolutely.
The parent and point to the sign and say, you know, company policy, please.
That's, that's not an issue at all. I could do that in a heartbeat. That's, that, I just was, you know, how are you going to police all this? And I mean, if I can, if I can do it like that, that's not an issue at all.
Signage?
Signage.
And on the literature that you pass out?
Yep.
Or any advertising or whatever?
Yep.
Then I could live with that.
Yep. That's fair.
The question is, would you be willing to do it at 12?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, 10, 12. Yeah, let's go 12.
Okay.
Because I mean, 14, there, that's getting.
That's, that's.
Well, a lot of kids, I think, can deer hunt at 14. So they know what's.
Right. I understand that.
Yep.
So that's, that's the, can I make that amendment from the floor?
Yes, you may.
I'd like that age to be 12.
That's fair.
With signage.
Yep.
And going out of your way to, you know, remind parents.
I will.
But you're not carding them per se.
Yep. Yep. Well, that's fair.
That be a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Now, this is going to be, we can make this condition two, because there's already one condition on the special use. And this would be to have signage and not allow any children under the age of 12 to be in the kill zone?
Yes.
Harvest area.
Harvest area. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you. Mr. President, and I understand the concern because I wouldn't have my children going to see that. But I'm still saying, there are a lot of people, I'm not saying they're going out hunting, but there are an awful lot of young boys and girls who are out hunting deer, pheasant, and they're not necessarily 12 and over.
Yep.
When does it become the responsibility of the parent? It seems to me, you know, I, some of my friends up here always say, hey, too much government. And this seems to me one step in that direction. I, I agree. It's not something I would say, gee, you got to have the kids go see it. But I, if you're satisfied with 12, I'll go along with you.
May I have a response to that, sir?
Sure.
My response to that is that the typical kid on, on a farm has learned responsibility and ethics and rules. I know some eight-year-olds that want to take a gat and bust a bullet in a certain part of your rear end. And they don't, they didn't get those rules of responsibility. And so the urban situation is a little bit slightly different from the farm situation. And I just think we have to bring the farm to the city in a reasonable way. And that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. Make, like, let the two meet, but meet it to where we're not having, you know, little kids thinking, okay, I can, I can decapitate somebody in the video game and I can go next door to the dog that I don't like and I can cut his throat too. And I know this is not, this is fuzzy. It's not clear. But I know there's something to it. And it's the psychology behind it. And psychology is hard to prove sometime. But that's, that's just where I'm going with it.
And just let me have a little fun with this. This is the same argument I, I would hear in my past life as a politician. The people from the country say, that's the problem with you guys in the city. You know what I mean? Lack of respect and things like that. And.
So if we, if we are not knowledgeable and we are ill and sick, give us some time to, to get there.
Thank you. I'll finish.
The stages.
Let me, there, there are, there are no more lights on. I just wanted to make a quick comment before I ask for the vote. Mr. Meyer, I'm glad you said this is old as because for about the, I had to, I talked to Dr. Thompson and shared with Dr. Thompson. And I have to agree with Councilmember Pauls. I hate doing that sometimes, but I have to agree with him. But for the first 10 years of my life, I never, I never bought, I never ate store-bought chicken. It always came from a facility like yours. So it's not, there's nothing new. And when I was five years old, my father taught me how to pick out a chicken. So I can probably come to your place and pick out a really good chicken for myself right now. Because I, I was taught how to do that. And I think, and it goes to what Senator Pauls, Councilmember Paul says, you know, about respecting the animals and knowing. And, and I've been on occasion with, I have members and friends who are Muslim and Palestinian and Jewish. And, and I've been on kills with them and how they sue the animal. And so it's not something that's unfamiliar to me. In fact, I, I think what you're doing and what you propose is, is better than what the larger operations do anyway. I think that's a more, that's a little bit more inhumane than what you're talking about and what I've seen other people do. So, but I just wanted to put that out there. I've been eating, I, for the first 10 years of my life, that's how I ate chicken. I never, I never bought store-bought chicken until I was about 12 or 13. I never bought it anyway. But my parents weren't. But, you know, I just wanted to share that with you, that it's, that, you know, I do, I do agree with Councilmember Pauls. I think sometimes we get a little overly protective sometimes. And, but I, but I, but I understand this, I understand the concern that people have in this new age with video games and other things. I think it's important to recognize those things and that the landscape has changed somewhat as to when I was growing up and, and so forth. So I understand your operation. I, I think it, I think it might be a very good operation, you know? And the one other thing that was good was when we bought, when we were able to buy, we got sick, we knew exactly where to go.
That's right.
So that, that also benefited us as well. So I didn't want to prolong this. There's a motion on the floor to amend and a second.
We got it this second.
I got it this.
We got it this second. Okay. Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second for the amendment. And just to restate the amendment, just so 12, 12, 14 years, 12 years old.
12 years age, signage and on your literature, putting the age limit down so that people know. But, but he doesn't have to card kids.
Okay.
Is that over the age of 12 or under the age of 12?
12 and under.
Well, and over can witness.
Okay.
12 and over can witness. Okay. Under 12?
Under 12.
That's the motion. Okay. No more lights. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
No, I just think there's a better way of going about it.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
As amended?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed, or adopted as amended, five to one. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Item Number 37 shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held August 5th, Agenda Item Number 38 shall be laid over three weeks to August 19th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading and public hearing on Agenda Item Number 39 shall be held on August 12th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading on Agenda Items Number 40 through 41 shall be held on August 12th. The public hearing on these items are today. Ordinance on second reading, item 40, ordinance approved in local agreement with Douglas County to set forth the rights, duties and obligations of each party with regard to the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau specifically funding for 2015 through 2023.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Item Number 41, ordinance to amend Section 23-177 by amending pay range for the employment classification on safety inspector.
Agenda item, and Agenda Item Number 41 is up for public hearing. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading and public hearing on Agenda Items Number 42 through 46 shall be held on August 19th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading and public hearing on Agenda Items Number 47 through 75 shall be held on August 12th.
Your motion adjourned.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
347.